We'll call to order the Village of Riverside, Illinois Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting of Wednesday, September 25th, 2019. Ms. Bamola, will you call the roll, please?
Mateo?
I'm here.
Commissioner Marhol?
Here.
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Commissioner Matthews?
Here.
Commissioner Hedigan?
Here.
Commissioner Palatier?
Here.
Commissioner May? We have a quorum.
Thank you. Welcome our new Commissioner, John Matthews. Thank you for serving on the commission. And I told John I'd give him an opportunity to say something by way of introduction if he would choose to.
Yeah, I'll give some time. So I just know, I'm just very happy to be here. I've, you know, lived in Riverside for a long time. I grew up in the area, so I'm delighted to be able to participate in something as important as the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I hope I can be of some use. Thanks.
Do we have a motion to approve the Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting minutes? Sorry, looking at the wrong piece of paper. And public hearing from August 28th, 2019?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions?
Abstain.
Thank you. Any visitors have something to communicate to the commission at this time? Okay. Our liaison is not here. Do we have anything from the Board of Trustees?
Latest update is that the Village Board did adopt the cannabis tax amendment, so they are permitted as permitted uses in the B-1C per year recommendation. There was one slight alteration after the meeting. It was clarified to us that they did pass a bill regarding the medical cannabis, and they took out the distance requirement in the state Medical Cannabis Act. So we did add the 500-foot buffer to the medical cannabis as well as the recreational cannabis in the tax amendment. So that's what was adopted by the Village Board at their last meeting.
Thank you. So now call to order a public hearing, PZ-19-05 concerning 43 East Quincy Street. This is a public hearing to consider a special use application to allow government offices and indoor recreation in the B-2 Mixed Use Periphery zoning district. The petitioner is the Village of Riverside. Everybody is still present? All in favor for opening the public hearing?
Aye.
Okay. All those present who wish to give testimony, please rise and raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is true to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Thank you. We'll also note the arrival of Commissioner May. Director App, would you give us a brief summary, please?
Yes. The property at 43 East Quincy is zone mixed-use periphery. The Village recently purchased the property and is looking to locate the Parks and Recreation Department's administrative offices at that location. They'd be moved from the water tower. Additionally, they're looking to create an indoor recreation facility for programming with the creation of a multipurpose room on the main level of that building. According to the zoning code, government offices as well as indoor recreation are both classified as special uses in the mixed-use periphery, therefore special uses are needed. The hours of operation for Parks and Recreation is 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. for their regular office hours. There are evening programs that will be at various times, but they go no later than 9:30. There are Saturday programs, typically no earlier than 9:00 a.m. and no later than 3:00 p.m., and there's typically no programming on Sundays. The building does have on-street parking, so there are 10 parking spaces, including one handicap accessible space on the site. The surrounding land uses include both commercial and some single-family residential, so behind it, it is zone single-family residential, and there are single-family homes behind it. To the east, it's zone mixed-use periphery as well, but it is occupied by a single-family home. And then to the north and to the west are existing commercial properties as well as municipal parking lot. And Director Malkiotti is also here to answer any questions that you have, or do you have anything else to add?
Yes. Good evening, Chairperson Mateo and members of the commission. You have most of the information in front of you. I'm certainly here to answer any specific questions you may have, but I can tell you that as the director, we're very excited about this project that will allow us to serve the community better and offer more than we ever have been able to in the way of programming. We're also happy to be a bigger part of the business district, and we're looking to explore cooperative programming and, of course, be good neighbors.
Before we start with questions, I want to note that the public notice was published in the landmark on September 4th and will be entered into the record as an exhibit. My apologies for not noting that earlier. Any questions for Director Malkiotti?
There are a couple of questions. I have a neighbor in 15 East Quincy, so...
Can you please go to the podium?
I'll go to the podium.
Please.
Sure.
It seems to be swarming.
Yeah, are you swarming? Uh, no. Should I be?
Yeah.
Can I be now?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Will Fruehmann. I live next door to this property.
Can you?
Yes, sir.
Raise your right hand, please.
Sure.
Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is true to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Thank you.
All right, cool. So I have a couple of questions about what you plan on doing with the property. Primarily, like, what kind of events do you plan on holding? Because it sounds like it's going to be available to rent, which is kind of a cool idea. I have some questions about the trees, or other, what do you plan on doing with the oaks? There, there. Excellent. Good to know. I love those trees. And do you plan on modifying the building in any way?
Right now, just the interior.
Just interior? Okay, no problem there. But yeah, what kind of events do you plan on holding with that space?
Just switch with you. Sure. Right now, the only event that we currently have that I can conceive moving would be our Touch a Truck event, which we currently hold on Pine Avenue. It's, it works there. It's a little problematic because we're kind of blocking access to the fire department, but that would be, that's from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., so it's during regular business hours. We would probably use the parking lot and some of the street, but that's the only event that I foresee right now. We could do others in the future, but nothing elaborate and nothing certainly that would be late or in violation of noise ordinance or anything like that.
Cool.
And the only modifications that we have planned right now are the interior. I know the outside is very industrial-looking. I hope some, somewhere down the road, certainly in compliance, that we could do something to kind of dress that up, but we don't have any major alterations to the building, the lot, or the trees.
Do you? Thanks.
Yep.
I had two questions, I think. The first question is, what kind of vehicles are you planning, or other equipment are you planning to store in the parking lot?
In the parking lot, we're hoping none. There is space behind the building, which we're hoping to utilize, where we could park our 15-passenger van, which is now currently at the Public Works Department, so it takes some travel. But in the existing garage would just be our baseball field dragger, like a trailer, and our pickup truck. Those are the only vehicles we have.
So those would be in the garage, which would not be feasible?
In the garage or behind it.
Okay. And then behind it could be the van?
Correct. The only vehicle that would be in the lot for any duration, if we're not able to utilize that space behind, would be the 15-passenger van, probably in the last space of the lot.
Okay. And then for people who are using the facility and coming to park in the lot, will that be free parking?
Yes.
And is there free parking on the street right outside of the building?
Limited. There's a few spaces out there, I believe, on that side, our side of the street, maybe two-hour parking, and then there's a limited parking on the other side of the street, I think, one or two spots. But for most of our programs, where we operate now out of the water tower is extremely limited parking because with the commuters and everything. So we're kind of used to it. Most people that use our programs walk, take their bikes, we'll accommodate all of that. So we'll actually have more parking at the Quincy location than we've ever had on Pine.
I do.
And in past years, the Village previously owned the facility, the building, and had used it for recreation?
I did hear that. We looked at this location in 2013. It wasn't feasible at that time, but I was told that, and I'm not sure if the Village owned it or leased it from the owner, but I do know that at one point, that was the Recreation Department. And I know members of the community have already reached out to me and said they took classes at that building, so it's a nice historical tie-in as well.
So just to clarify, you won't have outdoor programs, except perhaps Touch a Truck?
Right.
Okay. And on Sundays, no onsite programming, but there might be, like, the fishing derby, people coming and going to do programming elsewhere?
Right. Right now, we don't, yeah, we don't have any programs at the water tower on Sundays, so I don't foresee that, but if we expand it to the point where we would, it would be certainly within those hours. But I would say now, that's probably highly unlikely.
Okay. Other questions?
I see in the application, you're saying the parking lot meets code and is screened from the adjacent residence by a fence. What's the nature of the fence? Is it in good shape?
I believe it is. Is that, is that the property's fence, or is that the homeowner's fence? Do you know?
That's, it's from...
Okay.
So it was put in maybe three years ago? What fence is that?
This is a more general question, and so you might be the best person to answer. This was the site that was previously being considered for the brewery?
Yes. You'll, some of you may recall, three years back, maybe, there was a brewery that was looking at possibly locating at that location, but that did not end up coming to fruition, and NW Construction ended up coming before this commission for a specially, special use to put a contractor's office in that location.
Are there any other interested parties that would like to say anything?
Do you have any general comments?
Um, well, never.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Director Malkiotti? Director App? Closing comment?
No, thank you very much.
Okay. So once we close the public hearing, there won't be opportunities for anybody else to speak? Okay? Do we have a motion to close or continue? The public hearing?
I'm going to close the public hearing.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Does anybody have a motion they would like to make?
I would like to get the standard of the requested special use.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion first, or can we proceed to the standards? Okay.
I'd just like to note that this is, this use is consistent with past use of the property. Any previous use, such as a brewery, would have also had additional traffic at the site, so this is not inconsistent.
So according to the provisions of the zoning ordinance, the Planning and Zoning Commission should render a decision based on the following standards for a special use. The proposed use is designated by the zoning ordinance as a special use in the district in which the use is to be located. As Commissioner Marhol pointed out, it has been a special use in the past for various uses. The B-2 mixed sub-district, both uses are designated a special use. B, the proposed use will comply with all applicable regulations in the district in which the use is to be located. As noted in the application, the building codes will be met, fire provisions and parking conditions will be met. Anything, any other thoughts there? C, the location and size of the proposed use, the nature and intensity of the operation involved in or conducted in connection with it, the size of the site in relation to it, and the location of the site with respect to streets giving access to it are such that it will be in harmony with the appropriate and orderly development of the district in which it is located.
I agree. My comments could have easily been applied to C.
Parks and Recreation is currently located in the B-2, and B-2 mixed currently has offices, so it's consistent with that. Centrally located, allowing some families, as Director Malkiotti pointed out, to walk or ride their bikes to it. D, the location, nature and height of buildings, walls and fences, and the nature and extent of the landscaping on the site are such that the use will not unreasonably hinder or discourage the appropriate development and use of adjacent land and buildings.
As the director noted, they're not planning any exterior changes to the building, and the building has been in its current form factor, as they say, for probably 20 or 30 years.
And the district is currently fully developed, so this use will probably not hinder changes in development. E, parking areas will be of adequate size for the particular use, properly located and suitably screened from adjoining uses. The entrance and exit drives will be laid out so as to prevent traffic hazards and The area is fenced. There's an adequate parking lot, as pointed out, more than they had in the past. Okay? F, the proposed use will not cause substantial injury to the value of the property, of other property in the neighborhood.
This is consistent with past uses.
Could potentially increase value by having programming closer for families. And G, at least one year has elapsed since the denial of the Village Board. That's not applicable. Okay, so seems like we're finding that the standards are being met. Any other discussion before a vote?
No, it seems to me all the standards are met.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Commissioner May?
Aye.
Commissioner Hedigan?
Aye.
Commissioner Palatier?
Aye.
Commissioner Matthews?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Marhol?
Aye.
Chairperson Mateo? Yes. Motion approved.
All right. Thanks, everyone. So this recommendation will go to the Village Board. Director Malkiotti?
Yeah.
It's up to them.
All right.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you all.
Next, I'll reopen PZ-19-03, which was continued from August 28th, 2019. Request for a variation at 277 Gatesby Road from the building separation requirement to build, I have arrows here, to place a freestanding canopy less than 10 feet from the principal structure at the same location as a previous greenhouse. This would be a variation from Section 1073A6.D., the accessory structures and residential districts. The petitioner is Ms. Kimber Coombe, who is here. The public here, public notice was published in the landmark on August 7th, 2019, and will be entered into the record as an exhibit. All interested parties who wish to speak to this, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is true to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Thank you. Director App?
Yes. We have, as you said, variants for a property that's located in R1, a, a single-family residence district. The property is a designated local historic landmark.
Sorry, all in favor of opening a public hearing?
Oh, sorry.
I am out of order today. I'm sorry.
Aye.
Thank you. Apologies.
Yes. So it is a local landmark, and they are seeking a variation in order to construct a roofed structure, freestanding canopy, over the remaining brick knee wall of the original greenhouse that was part of this property. Now, the proposed canopy would allow them to protect the existing brick from further damage until such time that they can restore the knee wall and greenhouse. Our zoning ordinance requires any accessory structure in residential zoning districts to be separated from the principal structure by at least 10 feet. This would almost butt up to the house, so it would be probably less than a foot from the home. This, since it is a local landmark, does require Preservation Commission review and approval, so this was taken to the Preservation Commission at their last meeting, and they did approve the certificate of appropriateness to build this canopy. The canopy is proposed to be about 18 by 33 feet. It will be set back five feet from the west property line at its closest point. The eaves of the canopy extend approximately 24 inches, so you'd be looking at about three feet distance from the eve to the property line, and the height of the canopy is 14 It's going to have wood posts and frame with a standing seam metal roof. They're also proposing to put some screen panels and with detail work that's going to mimic the principal structure. This will not bring them over their building coverage or impervious surface limitations, so that will all still be in order. And as I noted before, the Preservation Commission did approve their certificate of appropriateness. There was a condition on there. There was some concern about damage that could happen to the, to the knee wall with them doing some excavation in close proximity to it where it is a little bit structurally unsound, so they did recommend underpinning the piers to the knee wall's foundation. So that is something that the Comeses will be addressing with their contractor to make sure that that happens if this variance is approved.
Thank you. Please.
What do we do now? Do you ask questions, or?
So you can make comments if you have anything to say, or?
Well, it's pretty simple. We have the remnants of the green, the knee wall, so it's, you know, comes about to here of the original greenhouse, and it's deteriorating. The exterior brick is the same kind of brick that is used on the house. The interior brick was Chicago brick, which is a much softer brick, and it is just disintegrating, which you can see in some of the photos that accompany the cover letter. And so our idea is that this roof structure will allow us to, first and foremost, protect it from the elements, you know, to stop all the snow and water getting inside where the Chicago brick is the most, what's the word I want to look? It's the softest, right? It's, it's, well, it's all exposed, but that, the Chicago brick is, is the really, you know, it's just disintegrating, you know? Also, it will give us time and the opportunity to work in sections so that as we fix it, it's just, it's super cost prohibitive to fix it all at once, like, this is a multi-year project. So by, you know, putting the roof on it helps protect it, helps protect the work that we do, and then, you know, we can hopefully work in sections. Like, we have to have special mortar mixed for the type of brick, you know, we don't just use lime, and so, you know, that takes months to get, and they can only make certain amounts at a time, and like, it's a whole situation, given the historical significance of the home. What else can I tell you?
You have questions for Ms. Coombe?
And before you purchased the property, there was a greenhouse on it?
There was. So this picture right here, so that's one of the few pictures that I have. It's at the top of one of your pages. My neighbor took this picture, and you can't really see, but it does, it goes all the way to the house. So, you know, we're not building anything, we're not putting a spaceship on the house, you know, there, there was a structure there, it did have a roof. Now, that was fully enclosed. We're, we're not proposing to fully enclose it. It'll, you know, just be open air, but our architect felt that the way we're doing the roof section would be enough to significantly reduce the deterioration of the knee wall. I mean, it will have the eaves, which helps a lot. The eaves help the house a lot. The house brick is in pristine condition, so, you know. But it's, it is a significant feature of the property. It's, it's historical, historically significant, architecturally significant, and it's just a really neat thing that, you know, we happen to inherit, that we'd like to preserve.
So this is basically being turned from a greenhouse into more or less a pavilion, then, correct?
It is kind of a pavilion. That's a really good way to look at it. My neighbor to the west of me, he's like, "Oh, it's going to be like at the forest preserves." I'm like, huh, well, kinda, you know, like, because this is the pavilion, so it's the posts and a roof. So in the greenhouse, just to clarify, it's not there today. I understand from my other neighbor, Mrs. Demonte, that the greenhouse had a tree fall on it somewhere between 2002 and 2006, you know, somewhere in there. She thought around 2004, 2005, but, you know, I don't think, I don't know. I think we could maybe go back to the Preservation Commission's records to see, because I believe the previous owner had to go to the Preservation Commission to get approval to take down the rest of the greenhouse, but I have not done that, so I don't know exactly when the tree fell.
Do you know when the greenhouse was built?
It was built with the house, so it would have been 1915. Yeah.
And given how close it is to your neighbor to the west?
Yes.
How are you going to deal with rainwater?
Oh, yeah, so to the west of me is Mr. Olson, and he couldn't be here tonight. He was planning to come the last one, but he couldn't be here tonight. And so when we moved into the property, there were tons of drainage issues, and on the west side of the property, one of the things we've done is there's a walkway, and so the walkway actually now is sloped to the north of the property, and in the north of the property, kind of beside the house, at the northwest corner of the house, we've created like a rock rain garden, so we try to funnel the water that way because there's two properties that are north of us who's, you know, their land just slopes this way, so Mr. Olson's yard gets flooded, and our yard does too, so, you know, we just have made that, and it helps his yard, it helps our yard. So for on the west side, of course, I also want to do rainwater collection stuff, but any excess overflow will just funnel into the rock. It's like a bowl. It's, it's planted around it, you know, we have plantings around it, but the bowl part is like just rock, if that makes sense. And it's never filled up, surprisingly enough, like, we thought it would fill up, but I don't know. It's, it's never filled up yet, so that's a good thing. On the east side of the property, that would be into our courtyard, and so I plan to just do like another big rain garden, and that I will fully, you know, plant because it's on the interior, but that's, gosh, that's a good 50 feet from the west property line, I think, something like that. Yeah.
Other questions for the petitioner? May, do you want to?
And this request is solely to build closer to the main house than would typically be allowed?
Right. So the current zoning, you know, you can't be further, you have to be 10 feet away from the principal structure. You know, my architect said, you know, well, you could argue that this is part of the principal structure, it is attached to the principal structure. You know, we're not trying to do anything fancy or anything like that. I mean, it is what it is. We just would like to take it, you know, to the, to the house, because the way it is, and it's really hard to see on those pictures. I wish I had a better picture for you, but like, if this is the greenhouse, right, so imagine this is the greenhouse, and there's this vestibule that goes into the house, this little, like, room with doors on all four sides, and so the greenhouse actually goes to this, it's connected to this vestibule. So if we are only allowed to go to, we have to, if we have to adhere to the 10-foot rule, then our canopy is back here, so I've got, you know, a good 50 linear feet or more of unprotected, you know, 104-year-old brick that I'm not going to be able to, I'm not going to be able to retain it, I'm not going to be able to restore it, you know, and then at that point, do we even try to retain or restore the rest of it? And does it fall into a ruin, so to speak? Because, and there is a fountain on the property that had, that is just a ruin at this point. It was that way when we moved in, but it's also a joint, shared thing, and like, we just can't... But it's also a joint, shared thing, and like, we just can't do anything with it to restore it without the neighbor's approval. But we love our house, you know, we've done a lot of work on the house. And it's, it's a great property, and, you know, we just, our philosophy is we try to restore the spirit of it. And we, we can't always restore it exactly the way it was in the past, but we've just tried to retain the spirit of the property and bring it into the new millennia.
What have you done to this state to protect that brick?
There's really not much we can do unless we build something, so we have not.
Well, have you put, like, for instance, any protection over, like, a tarp or something like that?
No, because that would increase the humidity. So it already has, it's not effervescent, it's, is it EFR?
EFR Florence?
EFR, yeah, EFR Florence, so it already has efferfluorazine, because it's like, I guess that's like the moisture between the bricks, and it comes out. So, I mean, we've had historical, people come out that, you know, do this for a living, and they said the best thing to do is just leave it open air. We were told by one brick guy that we could, like, spray it with like a sealer, and I called it the historical guy, and he's like, no, don't ever, don't ever do that to your brick. The brick on the exterior is just, it's a very soft brick, and like, you know, we're not supposed to clean it, we're not supposed to power wash it. The, the grout and mortar is very soft as well. So it's, what we've been advised by the people we've contacted throughout the last seven years is just leave it as is until we can, you know, go in and point, is it pointing or tuck pointing, you know, tuck pointing the whole thing, and then basically we're going to have to replace a lot of the Chicago brick.
So actually, the post canopy, may I ask, why did you select standing seam metal? But it's kind of a much different material and character than?
It is, so the current, the existing, the original roof was cedar shake. When we purchased the house, it had asphalt shingles. When we had to do the roof, we did have to replace the roof since we've owned the home. And when we replaced the roof, we looked in the standing seam, and it was just cost prohibitive. Standing seam, the lifetime is, you know, 100 years.
Right.
It's more environmentally friendly, you know, it's easier to maintain. So there's just a lot of benefits to it. It is also twice, if not more, the cost of asphalt shingles. And so that was like, you know, I wanted to do it way better. We couldn't do it economically. So in this project, I feel like it's a good fit because it's not, we're not building the greenhouse back. We're trying to build something that retains the spirit of the home. So I think there are some pictures in your packets of like our roof line, so it's just going to be identical to our roof line, it's just going to drop a little bit. And a friend of ours is an architect, and one of the things they tell their clients is that if you're, you can't match the house perfectly, do something that contradicts it kind of bit, you know? So I felt like the standing seam would give it, it sounds kind of weird, like it's such an old material, but it would give it like a little bit of a modern touch to the, to the property, and I think it would accentuate the roof line in a different way. So, we really like it though for the longevity of it. Maintenance, there's none.
Sure.
And I think it'll look really nice, you know, I do think it'll look really nice.
So, do you have a plan to ultimately rebuild the greenhouse itself?
We have looked into it. To rebuild a greenhouse is a 200,000-plus proposition, because it's, you know, it's 30-some-plus feet in length, and it's like roughly, on the interior, it's like 17, I think, or 18 wide. It's just not fiscally possible. It just does not make sense. It would not increase the property value, it would be limited use. I would love to at some point, I mean, that would be the ultimate goal, but I don't see that happening in the next 10 years, maybe when my son's out of college.
Okay, I'm just asking, because in the application, I misunderstood, it said, if this variance is not approved, it will eliminate our ability to maintain or restore a material and architecturally significant feature, parentheses, the greenhouse, closed parentheses, of the original Babson estate.
Oh, and I'm sorry, I refer to it as the greenhouse.
Okay, so the point is to protect the remaining brick wall?
Yes, so, so, so we want to protect it, we want to be able to do maintenance on it, and we want it to stay maintained. We want to be able to keep it from crumbling and falling apart. We've, like Sonia said, the Preservation Commission has talked to us about underpinning, we've since talked to our contractor, we now have a plan for that, and he is underpinning with the idea to hold the greenhouse glass, the weight of the greenhouse glass. We're definitely not going to eliminate any possibilities. I would love to build the greenhouse, I just, I don't know that we're ever going to be able to. But this would be a step in helping us to get there. If we do restore it, it would probably be a good 10 years before we're able to do that.
So it looks like from the diagrams, so the architectural drawings?
Mm-hmm.
You're maintaining the dimensions, height of the existing knee wall?
Oh, everything's the same. It has to be, yeah.
Is there a cap on the top of the?
There is.
So my, my last question is, I, you know, I don't, I don't have architectural expertise, but when I look at the, the drawing of the eaves of the pavilion? They only seem to extend about a foot farther than the knee wall itself, and yet they're eight and a half feet above the knee, the ground surface. So how does that, does that sufficiently protect the brick?
Yes, yes. So our, I think yes, our architect has said yes. So the reason that is, is because we cannot alter the greenhouse wall, right? So it is in the historical thing, where, you know, we can't amend the exterior of the house. So like, we can't take it down, we can't change the size of it, we can't build it up higher, et cetera, et cetera. So what we're doing is the posts for, that the structure stands on, will be inside of the greenhouse wall.
Right.
So I guess, like, when you look at the roof like this, you know, the bottom point where it flattens out for the, for the eaves, is actually like on an interior, and I guess it would probably fall kind of like at the interior of the knee wall. Because the posts have to be inside.
Right, yes. So the posts are inside, and then the eaves seem to extend about two feet beyond the posts. So that's, I was just saying that the knee wall seems to only be about a foot in from the edge of the eaves, but you've been assured that it'll be protected from the elements?
That's what they tell us.
And just one question on the, I don't know what side it is, it says supported granite countertop resting on top of part of the knee wall? What is that?
Oh, that was a fun thing we threw in with our architect. I don't know that we'll do that. But because that is the east side of the greenhouse, and we have a courtyard, like, it's like a square courtyard, and so he thought that would be nice for like, to have, because we entertain a lot outside. It does not, it does not change the knee wall, though. It is held by the two posts mainly, that's its main support. So we're not changing anything with the greenhouse wall.
Any other questions for the petitioner?
Hi, I'm Carrie Jordan. I'm a homeowner at 270 North Della Plain Road, so the front of my house faces Big Ballpark, and the back of my house backs up to Kimber's yard, and we share a fence line. So I'm here tonight to ask some clarifying questions about this proposed structure. I haven't seen the packet that you're looking at, but specifically I wanted to know what it will look like visually, and if it's different from the white tent that you had in your backyard for a number of years. When I saw the word canopy, that's what it made me think of, so I wanted to understand what exactly you're putting up.
May I? Please. Do you have other questions?
I do.
Let's do one at a time. Do one at a time.
Please.
So now it is post and beam structure, it's a wooden structure, it's a building. The roof line will be basically the same as our current roof line, and no, it is not a tent. Does any answer your questions?
And the other question that I had specifically had to do with how it's going to change the backyard, because my home looks into her backyard, and it's such a beautiful area, I wanted to understand specifically how that landscape would change once this structure is in place.
Currently, approximately six months out of the year, when the deciduous trees have leaves, Carrie has no visibility into, from her home into that section of our yard during the winter. During the winter, when the leaves are gone, it will, it's just replicating our current roof line, so you would see another roof line. So, I'll actually here. See if I have a good picture. So, you know, this is our roof line, right? So it's basically this, it's just going to come below that. It's not as tall as that, so it looks just like that. And the eaves come out very similar to that. It's just not as big. Does that make sense?
So if I'm, I do have full sight into her yard all year round, I've got lots of trees in my yard, but I do see it. And I am just very concerned about the way that it's going to look, both from my home and then from the side views as well. And that's why I'm here today. I want to make sure that everyone has a good understanding of what it will look like, and I did not prior to tonight. And I still don't think I have a really good idea, but as long as it's not the white tent, then that's a really good thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further? You need to be sworn in? Please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is true to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Thank you. Please go to the podium.
My name is Liv Jordan. I am Riverside resident. Carrie Jordan is my mother, the homeowner of 270 North Della Plain. I don't feel that I fully understand the nature of the project because I'm confused about potential, you know, Ms. Combs doesn't want to fully rule out the idea of a renovation of the greenhouse or a reconstruction of it. So I'd like to know the duration of this freestanding canopy, and what are the, what does it mean to restore the brick, and what will come of the restoration of the brick? Basically, it seems like it's a very well-thought-out plan to construct a canopy here, but will it be torn down for a greenhouse? That's what I'm not clear about.
I can't speak to that right now. As I said previously, we would love to restore the greenhouse, but at best, we'd be looking at 10 years, and I can't guarantee that we would ever restore it.
Do you foresee this canopy as being permanent? Right now, anyway?
Yeah, I guess, I guess we could say that. I mean, it's definitely not, you know, it's not built as like a temporary structure, there's no scaffolding, it's not, you know, it's, yeah, I mean, it's a real structure, you know, it's dimensional lumber, it's got the architectural detail from the other parts of the house incorporated into it. So if we can restore the greenhouse at some point, we'll address that at that point.
Can you speak a little bit more to the paneling and those kinds of things, or on at least one side of the pavilion?
Oh, in the plans?
Yeah, I only have, you know, black and white drawings.
Yeah, you know, I don't have a copy of the plans, but yeah.
Can I share this, or can I share this with your attorney first? I mean, it's one of the sheets.
So this, and did I put pictures of this?
You may have, but I didn't put them out.
I don't think so. They might not be in the packet.
Your proposed plan of renovation in some sections here?
Yeah, but, so in this section, and this is facing west, this is facing Mr. Olson's property, so we have fretwork on parts of our house. We have, let's see, we have bunnies, the neighbors have ducks, we have some other animals, but we also have this fretwork that is this geometrical pattern. And so that's currently, we actually restored it back to where it was originally on the house, so it is now on the east side of the house. And so basically, what we're proposing here, that the Historical Commission approved, is that we will replicate that fretwork on the west side of the structure, which faces Mr. Olson's here.
So, mine is with Kimber regarding that. So just describe what that's made of. Is that all, that's all wood?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And it would be dark stained to match?
Right, everything would be dark, yeah, to match the rest of the house.
Okay, and the type of vegetation that is currently, say, within the knee wall?
Yes.
Is it just grass?
No, there are some bushes, there are some grasses, there are some hostas, there's one rhododendrum, there's two hollies. So when we bought the property, it was just filled, and there were two, like, weeping cherry trees that were just, like, everything was dying because it was too compacted. So we've slowly been pulling stuff out, and so I, and I continue to do that today.
And this proposed surface is going to be concrete?
Uh, no.
Under the canopy?
Some, some type of a paper. Yeah, no, we wouldn't do concrete.
Nothing wrong with concrete.
Do you have more questions, Ms. Jordan?
I do.
So I understand the function of the canopy to protect the vulnerable brick, but I don't understand the use or the function of the brick itself. Is that just as a foundation for future projects, or are you using it as a pavilion?
I don't understand the question.
The preservation commission has not approved the removal of that wall, so it needs to remain until the Preservation Commission says it's okay for it to be removed, because it is part of the landmark designation of the home.
We are not removing any brick.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I just had a few more questions. And you said on the west side, there's the wood fretwork. On the east side, there, it's open?
Yeah.
Except for where the knee wall is?
Yeah, and the fretwork is open, too. So like, it's just, so imagine, you know, I got the roof, I got the knee wall, imagine just pieces of wood, like a chunk of wood, like a two-by-two, maybe. I'm not sure if that's the exact dimension.
A screen.
But no, no, not even, like a wood screen, I guess, right? Like, we're not screening it in with like, what you think of like window screen, but so it's like.
Like a trellis?
Yeah, yeah, that's, yeah, that's a good.
We have similar on our house.
Yeah.
Historic trellis.
Yeah, and like the little dark squares?
Yes.
That's where it's solid pieces of wood. So part of the geometric shape, aside, you have this line come down, and then you've got a little square, and then up here, they meet in a bigger square. And so we're just replicating the fretwork and the patterns that are already there.
So to clarify for everyone, the little, the squares are the solid part, and the rest of it is open?
Yes, yeah. And then at some point, we hope to, what do they call, like a CNC machine, take a CNC machine and like cut out then, like, the rabbits that we have, and some of the little flowers that are cut out in the original fretwork.
So I have a couple more questions, if I may. Do you have a schedule for? Do you have a schedule for the actual restoration of the brick itself and the mortaring in between the brick? Do you have like a timeline for when that will be completed?
I don't know at this time. It's a multi-year project.
Do you know when it would be commenced? Would it be started before the pavilion is created?
No.
Or after?
It would be after.
And how soon from, let's say, if you get approval from the village board, what would be your timeline? So it would be this fall, you'd get approval. What would be your timeline for actually beginning construction of the pavilion?
Uh, that would be up to our contractors. I don't know how busy he is right now. So I, I don't know. I mean, in a perfect world, it would, we'd get the permits and it would be built, right? But there's still the village board and different things to go through the process. So I don't know if we would be able to get approval before. We could break ground, so if we don't break ground till next year, the project itself, I've been told by our contractor that it's fairly straightforward and simple. And so it shouldn't take, you know, it's not going to take like three months to construct.
It will take less than three months?
Well, that's what he said. But I don't know if you've ever done construction with a general contractor. We have, and they're often, you know, they like to give you a nice short timeline. But it's, so, I mean, I would imagine, let's see, so we're already at the end of 2019. I, I'm imagining it probably wouldn't get constructed until next year. And so then we could probably order the materials for the brick. It's the, it's the compound, it's the...
Mortar.
Mortar, right. It's the mortar we have to order. And so probably the year after, so this is 2020, 2020 would be built and then 2021, we could start working on the brick and mortar.
And do you have a cost estimate for just the creation of the pavilion, not anything to do with restoring the brick?
Um, not nailed down. Our contractor is still working on those numbers. He was supposed to get those to me this week, but he has not returned those yet.
Okay. Thank you.
So to circle back to the variation request?
Yes.
The intent is to build the pavilion so as to totally cover or protect...
The knee wall.
The knee wall.
Yes.
And the knee wall was originally the foundation for a greenhouse, which was attached to the house.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Just one more. So basically, your, your plan, your roof is about 34 feet long.
That sounds about right.
And it looks like it's, it's basically three bays, a posted beam. If the variance isn't approved, is there an alternate plan to build one that's completely within code? That's only, say, three or two bays of posted beam where you're 24 feet long?
Not at this time. I don't know that we would see the value in that, given that a third of greenhouse would be unprotected. And so it would compromise any work that we were to do.
Okay.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Anyone else in the audience? Please stand and raise your right hand.
Okay.
Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is true to the best of your knowledge?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Please go to the podium.
I just kind of have a question. Like, while the process is happening of like making the like structure that you're making, will it be like? I just didn't hear the last part. How long will it take again?
We don't know at this time.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Can I add something?
Yes.
So this is in your cover letter, but I'll just restate it. So, and this is Carrie, I don't remember your last name, I'm sorry. She lives at 270 North Dela Plain. So the southwest corner of the pavilion will be approximately 25 feet from the closest point of our shared property line. Additionally, it is approximately 94 feet from the closest point of her garage, of the northeast corner of her garage, and approximately 135 feet from the northeast corner of her primary dwelling. So we are not in close proximity to any of her buildings. We are not, we are 25 feet from her north property line. And then we share, I don't know, probably like a couple hundred feet of a west property line. So it runs behind Olson's. So just to give you some perspective on where their property is.
Okay. So, once we close the public hearing, we will not have more public comments. So if there's anything else, now's the time. Say anything? Okay. Do I have a motion to close or continue the hearing?
Motion to close.
All in favor? Thank you. Okay. So since a variation requires that all seven standards to be met, to recommend in favor of a variation, let's go through the standards first. They're on page two. And I'll note that since the agenda was published, we did receive a letter in favor of the variation According to Section 10-22A of the zoning ordinance, the village board may vary the application of regulations set forth in the zoning ordinance in specific cases where there are practical difficulties or particular hardships in carrying out the strict letter of the regulations. The Planning and Zoning Commission may recommend varying the provisions of the zoning ordinance upon making the following findings. Because of a particular physical or other unusual condition of the specific property involved, a particular hardship or practical difficulty to the owner would result as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the strict letter of the regulations were to be carried out. Such conditions may include, but are not limited to, the presence of an existing use or structure, whether conforming or non-conforming, irregular or substandard shape or size, exceptional topographical features, or other extraordinary physical condition peculiar to and inherent in the subject property that amounts to more than a mere inconvenience to the owner and that relate to or arises out of the lot or structures thereon rather than the personal situation of the current owner of the lot, or situations in which the ordinance prevents the owner from re-establishing, restoring, or maintaining a material feature or significant architectural feature related to the lot or structure, or from maintaining the architectural integrity of the lot or structure. I apologize for reading to you guys, because you have the materials, but not everybody in the audience does. So thoughts on that first standard?
I think in general, I'd like to start off with the fact that we are really only considering a variation from 10-foot standard.
Correct.
That all the discussion about architecture and potentially what this looks like would not be under consideration if we were not thinking about and addressing the 10-foot We're debating the 10-foot requirement. We're not debating the look of the structure. If it was built 10 feet away from the existing house, Ms. Coombs could build it. We're really only considering this 10-foot issue. The other elements, what it looks like, what it's protecting, actually, what it's protecting is the most important thing. But what it looks like really aren't a consideration, or they're certainly not the most important Now that being said, with this item A, the greenhouse was built in 1915 or thereabouts, and so this is unique to the structure, or unique to this property.
I would further say that the particular hardship is that this thing exists and Ms. Coombs is obligated to protect it because she is really unable to remove it. Expecting her to restore a greenhouse at a significant cost is seemingly unreasonable. Really, without the 10-foot variation, she would not be able to protect this feature of the property. So I feel like that is, definitely meets the hardship requirement of item A.
Or difficulty.
Or difficulty.
I see it under number two, maintaining a material feature of a landmark property.
Yes.
The greenhouse was placed where it was and can't really move it.
Director App, do you have any information about specifically what the preservation commission approved? Their findings, a fact, or certificate, or whatever they did?
Uh, they have the same materials essentially that you have. They have those plans, and so that's what they reviewed.
What is the standard they had defined, was met?
Uh, they go by the Department of the Interior standards. So since this is detached from the home, they weren't overly concerned about the look of it. However, they were interested in how it would preserve an integral part of the home. And so that's where they looked into it and were making findings related to how it could better preserve and keep that, that knee wall safe. So that's more what they were looking at.
So they did make findings that the structure would protect the knee wall? Because as I said, I'm looking at it and I'm thinking the roof is very high compared to if you have rain coming in or snow blowing in or things like that. That's part of my concern, so...
Right. They were, it's not perfect, but they felt it was satisfactory to try to preserve, to do what she was looking to do, to give her time to restore the brick.
Okay. Thank you. Any further thoughts on A?
I think you said it better than I did. We're definitely in a situation where the ordinance prevents the owner from re-establishing the protection of the knee wall.
The rest of these are short. B, the purpose of the variation is not based primarily upon a desire to increase financial gain? Yes, I think that's met. Yeah. It's going to be a financial cost. C, the alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person presently having an interest in the property?
Right, that's met, I think.
And it's built 100 years ago. D, the conditions upon which the petition for variation is based would not be applicable generally to other property within the same zoning classification?
Right. Yes, I think that's true.
That's a question I had for Director App. Are you aware of any historic accessory buildings that are in need of repair like this? Repair or restoration? Sorry to put you on the spot. Not off the top of my head, no. E, the granting of the variation will not be detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to the property or improvements in the neighborhood in which the property is located?
This is the only thing that I, I think it is not. This is the one item that I think does get back, get to those additional items that I spoke of, i.e. look and feel. And in this case, the design of the pavilion seems to be sympathetic to the existing structure and would certainly be better than any tarps or tents.
And except for immediate neighbors, will not be seen? Your house can't be seen? F, the granting of variation will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood?
So this is the only one that I would question, saying a standing c metal roof is, like you say, it's very modern, but it, it doesn't necessarily go with the context of the surrounding properties. That's, but if the landmarks committee has already gone through, that's not what we're here to debate. I'm sorry, I'm an architect. I apologize.
But in the long run, it'll improve the property, which...
Correct, yeah.
The neighborhood.
Exactly. And you're right, it's not going to be something you have to repair.
And finally, G, the proposed variation will not impair an adequate supply of light or air to adjacent property, or substantially increase the congestion of the public streets, or increase the danger of fire, or impair natural drainage, or create drainage problems on adjacent properties, or endanger public safety, or substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood. I believe he said it is met.
The primary reason, I believe, and Sonja can correct me, but one of the reasons we have distance requirements between primary structures and secondary structures is, to some degree, a fire issue?
Yes, and I think that falls more into accessory building requirements. So when you're looking more at garages, so you're looking at an accessory building that could be housing things and have a fire that spreads to, to the, you know, adjacent structure. So that is part of it, although I think their restriction comes in more like the three feet to five foot range per building code regulation, as I recall. In our instance, we've amended that to go by the zoning code regulation, which is the 10-foot separation. But in this case, we have an open-air pavilion, so there is no walls. And so there's less of that adjacent wall that would be abutting the, that would just be the posts.
And mass timber is generally considered fairly fire, it's not fireproof, but it's certainly structurally sound in fire conditions.
What, do you mean by a masked timber?
Mass timber, big timber. Eight, but the eight by, the eight by eight beam columns that are indicated in the plans, that would be mass timber.
As well as the standing roof, the standing metal roof.
So I think, I think the design of the structure in this case does not increase the danger of fire.
But it, I would guess that they're planning on having fires in the pavilion because there's like a vent at the top of the roof. So I assume that's why, it's a smoke vent or something like that?
No, just for, it just would vent, Sean would perhaps be better...
It's so you don't get stagnant air stuck underneath you there.
Thank you.
It'll provide a nice cross breeze.
But it is fairly open nonetheless, also, right? As we discussed, because the squares are the solid parts.
And Director App, if a building permit is approved, drainage would be addressed in that, right? So we think that standard has been met? Okay. Would anybody like to make a motion?
Motion to approve the variation?
Recommend approval?
Yes.
Is there a second second?
To recommend.
To recommend. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Day?
Aye.
Commissioner Heggigan?
Aye.
Commissioner Pelletier?
Aye.
Commissioner Matthews?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Marhul?
Aye.
Chair Mateo?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. So again, we're recommending body, it goes to the village board, as you know, and second meeting in October, maybe, but you'll be, you'll be told. Thanks. Thank you for coming. Now I'd like to call to order public hearing, PZ 19-02 for 124 and 128, excuse me, Berrypoint Road. All in favor?
Aye.
Let the record show that all commissioners are still present. This is a request for a variation to allow non-conforming shared gravel driveway to remain, to consider variations from Sections 10-73E7B2 prohibited driveway materials, 10-73E8 existing residential gravel driveways, and 10-107 non-conforming residential driveways of the Village of Riverside zoning ordinance for the shared driveway located at 124 and 128 Berrypoint Road in Riverside in the R1A single-family residence district to allow for an existing gravel driveway to remain. The petitioners are Unmash Jindal and Mary Schlescher, and they are here. Public notice was published in the landmark September 4th, 2019, and will be entered into the record as an exhibit. Anybody who would like to give testimony, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear that the test, do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is true to the best of your knowledge? Thank you. Director App? Oh, sorry, forgot.
It's fine. The subject properties are both zoned R1A residential, single-family, and they both share an existing gravel driveway, as Chair Mateo said, Section 10-73E7B2. gravel driveway, as Chair Mateo said, section 10-7-3E, 7B2, titled prohibited driveway materials prohibits gravel as a driveway material. Section 10-7-3E8, titled existing residential gravel driveway, states existing residential gravel driveways are allowed to remain provided they comply with certain maintenance standards. Section 10-10-7A, non-conforming residential driveways, states that residential gravel driveways that do not comply with section 10-7-3E8 are required to be brought into conformance within five years of the ordinance change. The code change to prohibit gravel driveways was adopted back in 2005 due to concerns about aesthetics and dust. The new ordinance established a grace period for existing gravel driveways. In 2008, all owners of existing gravel driveways, which were 48 owners, were notified of the code change and that their driveways would need to be brought into compliance by 2010. At the compliance inspection in 2015 for 124 Berrypoint, the inspector noted the gravel driveway, that it did not meet maintenance standards. The owner and the buyer at the time of 124 Berrypoint were notified of the non-conformity and the required compliance date on the certificate of compliance. Given at closing, both the owners of 124 and 128 Berrypoint were notified again in 2016 of the non-conformity and the need to replace the existing gravel driveway with an approved material. They were given a compliance date of August 31st, 2017. The variation application was received July 2019 and completed in August 2019.
Do you have anything that you would like to say to the commission?
Sure.
Thanks.
My name's Unmash Jindal, everyone calls me AJ for obvious reasons. So we, the code allows existing gravel driveways, right? That's, I don't think that is in question. We are only applying for a variance because we have been told that we have to apply for a variance because it sounds like, and this is the first time that I am hearing this, that we have lost our opportunity to comply with section, what is it, 10-7-3E8 about existing gravel driveways can remain as long as they meet maintenance standards. At no point have I ever received a building code violation or any notice that specifically said you have, your gravel driveway doesn't meet two inches of pavement, asphalt that doesn't have steel borders. If I had received such a notice, I would have brought it up to code. So what I have been consistently told is that I have to replace my gravel driveway. Which, I mean, if the code allows an existing gravel driveway to remain, I, I, again, I've not been told that there is a, that, that, that we have forfeited our opportunity to do so. I'm not aware of a specific timeframe that is mandated by the code to do so. That is the only reason we're applying for a variance. And if you look at the substance of our application, it is a variance that we can comply with, so we can use section 10-7-3E8. We're not trying to get away with anything else. We're not trying to, you know, have a crappy gravel driveway or, I don't know, something like, you know, soil. So that is really the crux of it for us. You know, we, we, I mean, that's really the crux of it. We, we did not know that, we, you know, we are not aware of a timeframe, we never received a building code violation, we are happy to comply with section 10-7-3E8. We're happy to do that. We can commit doing that this year. I'll, I'll go through the other, the other arguments that everyone makes, and I know that they're not really going to be compelling. Obviously, there is a massive difference in cost between gravel and asphalt or concrete. We obtained four bids and the difference is four to eight times the cost. If you're familiar with our homes, our homes are among the cheapest and smallest in Riverside. You know, they're not gigantic, I'm still wondering square feet, slat not great, so those married, they're twins. They're twins, they're identical twins, actually. Also, our shared water and sewer line runs underneath the gravel driveway. So if we had to replace it with asphalt or concrete, then we would then have to move the water and sewer lines, which would be an additional cost. And the last thing is permeability. Our, the, the, the distance between our homes is, it's pretty narrow. So the gravel driveway does a good job of absorbing runoff. And obviously, a, an impermeable surface would not. So, you know, there, there would just be water runoff issues that would be created by using a permeable surface. That's all I got.
Questions for AJ?
Do, do you or the other owner have any knowledge as to how long a gravel driveway has existed? Or gravel driveways that are joined has existed in that location?
My understanding is that it's always been there.
And the houses were built in the 19, what, 15? 1915, okay, thank you.
Besides us, there are two other gravel driveways left in Riverside. One is at 104 Scott's, Scottwood, the other is 1014. So the other gravel driveway is still in Riverside. And I think we have the opportunity-
Ma'am, if you're going to speak, can you come up to the podium, please? It's for posterity.
If we have the opportunity to bring our driveways up to code, it would certainly improve the appearance. But it would also stay in character with our houses. They're prairie-style cottages, they're very tiny, and they've always had these, I mean, they have long eaves to drain the water off and onto the driveway which soaks it up so we don't have flooding, which is a big deal. Like I said, and it won't change the character of the neighborhood at all because the driveway matches the character of the houses. Any questions?
How long have you owned your own?
Since 2006.
When did the ordinance, sorry?
I'm sorry?
When, when did the ordinance maybe for, Sonya, when did the ordinance change?
The ordinance was adopted in 2005 with the kind of major overhaul of the zoning ordinance that was, was one of the items as part of that. And then I believe in 2008 is when the village sent out a mass notification to all the existing gravel driveway, properties with existing gravel driveways notifying them that the compliance date was coming in 2010 to let them know that they needed to change material, you know, bring their property into conformance with an approved material, not gravel, by, I believe it was November of 2010.
So Ms. Schlescher would have received one, a notice in 2008?
Her address was on the list of-
I don't have a recollection of that. It would have scared me if I got that.
So what's your department's record of how many gravel driveways are still, non-landmarked gravel driveways?
Currently, there are 26.
Yeah, there are 26 left. I don't remember how many of those are landmarked, I believe only two are, but, yeah, they were 48 back when we sent the notices in 2008. Now there are 26.
So most are coming in? They're coming into compliance?
Right, over time.
Because it's, people are usually notified upon sale of a home? Is that right?
Since I've started, that's where we've been noting it, is in the certificate of compliance. I believe Mr. Jindal was one of the first ones that it came to my attention with a gravel driveway. And so at that time, we said, this is, you know, the five-year grace period has ended, what do we do with this? And he's a new owner, so we figured the best place to put it would be on the certificate of compliance. So at the closing, he was notified that there was something he'd need to take care of, and we gave him one year to, to bring it into conformance to an approved driveway material, not being a gravel driveway. So, you know, the ordinance states what the other drive, permitted driveway materials are, whether it be grasscrete or pavers or asphalt, concrete. So that's what he was notified. And then with it being a shared driveway, we then made notification to the neighbor as well and gave them some additional time since they would need to work together to be able to, to figure something out, get quotes, things like that. So we've been working with them over several years to bring this, to try to bring this into compliance. And staff's interpretation has been that the five-year grace period, that the, the non-conforming section that talks about the five-year grace period, is this five years to bring, you had five years to keep your gravel driveway, and then you had to bring it into one of the approved materials. And as we did further research on this, I think I made amazing copies of the brochures and letters and stuff that were sent out at that, at that time that talks about, that they did not want to have gravel driveways anymore except for the existing landmark homes, which would be allowed to keep them, that they're specifically grandfathered in. So in looking at the code, in the context of the code and some of these other things, it's been staff's belief that the idea was to get rid of gravel driveways and have them replaced with a more permanent, less maintenance type of product. The idea then, which we saw in the brochure, was there was concerns about dust, maintenance issues, et cetera, with a gravel driveway, which is why they wanted to move away from it. So the way it kind of reads, staff's interpretation has been that the idea was, is the gravel driveway supposed to be phased out, and that was the purpose of that five-year grace period, was to give people that opportunity to do it over that period of time. That didn't necessarily happen, so now we're doing it on a case-by-case basis as the properties are selling, to let them know that this is something that they need to address and bring into compliance.
So I get all that. I mean, I totally get all that. I'm not, not gonna, you know, totally get all that. I think a lot of it just comes down to, to be, to just be straightforward, is, is that what the code requires? Me, I am so not a zoning lawyer, thank God, but, you know, my read of the code says, existing residential gravel driveways are allowed to continue provided they comply with the following maintenance standards. I, I don't, I didn't read anything that said there's a five-year limitation from when the ordinance passed, and I get the logic of it, so I'm not, I'm not arguing with that. But I don't read any of that. And so I, I guess I just ask you, do you think the code allows us to keep our driveway? If you do, then I think we should be able to. And that's the only reason we're filing a variance.
And we would immediately.
And we would imme, we would comply by the end of this year. The only reason we're filing a variance is because we were told that the code does not allow us to keep our existing gravel driveway.
Um, yes, actually, like, that's, when I was looking over these materials, that's what kind of struck me, and I did mention this to Sonya to get some input, but I'm also wondering if Michael could give me a read, because when I read this, and the pages are missing from my ordinance binder, so this is stuff I printed out earlier, so if I, you know, hopefully I got it right, but. So the exception on existing gravel, gravel driveways does say existing gravel driveways are allowed to continue provided they comply with the following maintenance standards. Okay, so, and then what I got from it was that if, if you don't comply with those maintenance standards, you're tossed over to section 10-10-7 of the ordinance, and that's where I got all the sites there, which is residential gravel driveways that do not conform to the maintenance standards of subsection 10-7-3 parentheses, 8, existing residential gravel driveways of this zoning ordinance are required to comply within five years of the date hereof. But, you, you know, what leaps out to me there is comply with what? I don't see any, it doesn't say comply with section 10-7-3-7A, or comply with bringing your gravel driveway up to standard. It's, it just seems, it's just extraordinarily ambiguous that it was never, we never, it was never codified that after five years, you absolutely have to move away from gravel and you have to absolutely go to one of the five, or pea gravel, I suppose, you could pea gravel in certain areas, you, five possible driveway materials.
Right, and so, so I agree, there's a lot of ambiguity here. And when you read this section that Mr. Jindal, Jindal read, you know, by itself, it sounds like, yeah, you meet these standards and you're good. But, but as you pointed out, you know, we have this, this question in 10-10-7, and what is, what does this mean for the five-year, when it says you're required to comply within five years of the date hereof? Comply with what? And as Sonya has said, staff's longstanding interpretation of this is that it means not that you comply with the gravel standards, but that you instead come into compliance with the, one of the approved materials. And, and I, I think that's a reasonable interpretation. You know, several things that, that, so we can't tell exactly from the code one way or the other, right? So then we start looking, well, it, it could go either way, so we look at some of the factors outside of the code. One of those is that it was clear, and it's, I think that's expressed in the code as well, it's clear that the intent of changing the requirements was to get rid of gravel driveways over time, right? There, there were concerns about aesthetics, there's concerns about dust. So in that sense, it doesn't make sense that, hey, we're going to let these, we're, we're going to let all the existing gravel driveways continue to exist forevermore so long as they meet these co, these requirements. Also, when we look at the 10-10-7 language, about five years, so to me, five years sounds like a time period that you would put on something if you were requiring somebody to do something expensive, like come into compliance with the required materials as opposed to just getting your gravel driveway up to gravel driveway speed. And, and the last, and, and I think one of the most persuasive things that I saw was just this letter that, that Meg put in your materials today. So 2008 was much closer in time to, to the time that this was approved. One of the things I asked for is, what was the legislative intent when this change was made? We weren't able to tell that from the ordinance itself, as I understand, because it was part of a big rewrite. So there's not a lot of focus particularly on this point that anyone can, can point to. But this letter that was sent three years after the fact clearly is telling people, what you gotta do within the five years is, is get with the program in terms of not coming into compliance with the gravel standards, but replacing it with a approved material. And, and so for all those reasons, staff has continued to have an interpretation that, what the five years to comply refers to is to come into compliance with an approved material, not to come into compliance with the gravel standards. And so that's what's before us today. We're not here to hear an appeal from her ruling on that or to do a zoning interpretation. We have an application for a variation before you that will allow them to, to, if, if approved, to bring their driveway, either leave it as it is or bring it up to the, the gravel standards if you guys want to let them keep it, based on their variation request. Otherwise, they're going to need to come into compliance with the, with the approved materials list. Does that all make sense?
Yes, I have a few things on that. So one is, I mean, it's an interpretation, right? So that's part of the question is, well, is that interpretation the code? I mean, one thing I'd ask you, if that interpretation is the code, then why doesn't the code say that, why doesn't the code say that everyone must within five years bring, remove their gravel driveway? Why are you then giving, giving us notices when there's a triggering event like a sale? I mean, there are, what, 26 other, 26 other non-landmark gravel driveways? So what, what interpretation do you, what, what is in the code that says we have the right to do this upon a triggering event? I mean, if you believe that you, the code allows you to do that, why don't you just cite all 26 of the other owners, the other non-landmark owners, including us, and just say, you have to do this now? Me, this is the logic used when there is an ambiguity in the code, and then there is a justification for a turnover, for a triggering event, to make new owners have to comply with the code. It's not new. So I, I mean, it's just, I'm bringing that up because it's a question of interpretation. The only, and, and I disagree with that interpretation. And I don't think there's support for it in the code. Secondly, we would not keep the existing gravel driveway. Again, nobody's ever told us the existing gravel driveway doesn't, is, is not two inches, you know, on average, which it's not, I mean, you can see that, it's not. But nobody's ever told us that, but we're telling you, we would absolutely bring it in compliance with section 10- in compliance with section 10-7-3 E8 by the end of the year. We have no interest in keeping the existing gravel driveway in this condition. So you don't have to worry about that.
I have a question for, I think.
Sonya or?
Do we have questions for the petitioners? Otherwise, they might wanna sit down. If you choose to, I'm not telling you, I have to sit down.
I don't have any.
Rick, you go.
They're good, okay. Go ahead.
Oh, okay. So my question is, have we, has the village ever received any complaints regarding this gravel driveway from any resident of the village?
I have not.
That's all I have.
There is one other gravel driveway across the street from us, it's in the beautiful landmark town, Ralphson, whatever the heck that thing is, that's, you know, wonderful and nobody wants to pull for some reason.
Can you explain the difference with that driveway?
Um, yes, as a local landmark, it says in our ordinance, "The decorative pea gravel only for homes that are designated historic landmarks and approved by the village board." So in their case, they are allowed to keep and maintain their driveway because it is a local landmark. That's the, the door cottage there at 100 Fairbank, which is kind of kitty-cornered from, from their location, so.
Thank you.
Same thing with the, the Cooley House, I believe they have a gravel driveway and that's allowed to be maintained as part of, as part of it, as part of their landmark designation.
I'm assuming there haven't been any complaints from the neighbors because our driveways don't abut anybody else except the two of us, so any drainage problems would be just between us. Any dust would be just us. And like I said, they've been there for.
What is, what's the status of the other?
25 driveways then, is, is the village pursuing any sort of enforcement action against those? When I came across this ordinance and had to start dealing with the situation in consultation with the village attorney, we decided it would be something that we take care of at the compliance stage, so when a house is sold, if it's not, you know, especially if it's not being maintained, gravel driveway, then we make sure we make a note on there that it's an existing nonconforming gravel driveway and needs to be brought into conformance. And typically, when we find those kind of nonconformities that are something that have to be rectified, we typically give them one year to do it. I'm willing to be flexible with them, you know, construction season and costs and things like that, but we at least have it on there that we're expecting compliance with one of the approved paving materials that's in the ordinance. And then they, you typically come in and say, "What does this mean?", and sometimes they don't close on the house, sometimes they do still close on the house, so we've probably had, I wanna say, three or four that we've noted on the compliance. I know one has brought it into compliance and a couple others have been notified, they're in process, but they have not brought them into compliance at this time. So, since the 2008 notifications, there hasn't been any sort of mass enforcement activity? Okay. When you send out these letters, do you notify the property owner that they have an option for applying for variation? No?
Can I just say, if, one question I would ask then, if anybody else in Riverside, and again, I get the public policy, but if anyone else in Riverside is being allowed to keep their gravel driveway as long as it complies with 10-7-3 E8, then I would, I would really struggle to understand why we wouldn't be. When we have not received a building code violation, we have, we are, we do not, you know, like, don't read a specific timeframe and we're telling you that we would happily do that. It's the only reason we've applied for a variance is because we, we're told we needed to.
I would argue that you were notified of the nonconformity when you purchased the house and I put it on your certificate of compliance, that it was something that needed to be addressed. That was your notification.
Understood.
And these were letters that went out for sales in 2008 or later?
No, the original letters went out to every homeowner back in 2008 that had a gravel driveway, is my understanding, based on the record. When 1124 Barry Point went on the market and there was a compliance certificate, Mr. Jindal was notified at that time that this driveway was nonconforming and would need to be replaced with approved material.
Right, and my issue has always been that I don't think that the driveway needs to be replaced, but I do, I mean, Sonya's right, I mean, I did, I did receive that notice, that really the disagreement is, I don't think that it needs to be replaced with like asphalt or concrete or such.
I told him that I could not approve for him to bring it to the maintenance standard because of how the code read, so his remedy would be to ask for a variance in order to be able to do that, if he did not want to use a different material.
President?
Go ahead.
Ms. Schlescher?
Yes.
Ms., you did not receive a notice at the time of purchase of your home. You said you, you purchased the home in 2006.
2006, yeah.
Was there, to the best of your knowledge, was there a certificate of compliance or was she notified?
At that time, I don't know that she was, I didn't see anything in the file, but in 2008, there were letters that were sent out and her address is on the list of gravel driveway addresses, so.
The first I heard of it was when AJ showed me his letter and asked if I had gotten one, and so, you know, maybe we should just join forces and, seemed like a good idea.
Hard to do one without the other.
Is it hard to do one without the other, Sonya, in your opinion?
It can be, it depends on how much room they have, because we do have, once you, you know, if you're putting in a new driveway, which if we're gonna separate those two, then we have two new driveways, it does require a one-foot setback off of the property line, so then that is, again, narrowing the area between the house and the property line that can be utilized for, for the driveway. So depending on how the houses are situated, if they were to do that, that might make one driveway, if it was individual, not usable, depending on how much clearance there was between the corner of the home and that one-foot setback off the property line.
And the one-foot separation would only be required if they chose not to do a joint driveway?
Right. If they do a, yeah, if they do a shared driveway, again, you know, we would just require, and we've had a few, as they've been replaced, they've had to get the recorded shared access and maintenance agreement, so, but that's maintained. And that's what, that's what's in the code regarding shared or letting driveways, is that they are supposed to have a shared access agreement.
So I see on the bids that you solicited bids for asphalt driveways and for concrete driveways, but asphalt is considerably more cost-effective. For argument's sake, have you solicited a bid to get it to the current?
Gravel?
Yes.
We did, I don't have the bids with me, it's one of the bids, I think it was a total of like $4,000 if I remember correctly, between the two of us.
It's in the bid for Murphy Paving and Seal Coating?
Well, I, my, my.
It says, it says new asphalt driveway, but, oh, I'm sorry, it, it simply says, "Install top layer of new stone on existing driveway in compact," which to me implies just stone and that was for 3,500.
That's, that was their, that was their very detailed quote for gravel.
That, that doesn't necessarily say that's two inches edge to edge.
I gave them the code. It, yeah, so it might, I mean, you're right, it doesn't include edging. I thought there was a bid that did. I remember, my memory is that it's in the 4,000s, you know, like, I mean, that's 3,500, you know, edging, whatever, another 500 to 1,000.
If you look at the bid for TMW on the second page, kind of on the back, it says, "Options, number one, gravel driveway with CA number six," and it says the prices for that option with number two, metal edging for gravel driveway. So it kind of tells you the different prices down below.
Can you, you know, what does the price say? I don't have it, thank you.
It says, "Price of done in gravel is 2,275, price of done in asphalt is 4,050, price of done in concrete is 6,200."
Did the gravel include metal edging?
Price for metal edging for gravel driveway is 940. I'm not sure if those are together or if they're separate, or each or respective.
I mean, my, yeah, my memory is that it was like 30,000 or 4,000, I was total, I mean, obviously much cheaper. Because I think the minimum bid we got from asphalt was like this, between the, from 12 to 15.
Yeah, it looks like 11,000 for the asphalt.
11,000. Director App, you said you consider concrete driveways to be impermeable, right?
Right.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question. Director App does not include, includes concrete driveways as part of the impermeable surface up a lot because they're so compact?
Yeah, gravel driveways, you mean.
Sorry, what did I say?
Concrete.
That too, but yes. Gravel driveways are impermeable because they're so compact.
Because of the compaction requirements, we don't classify a gravel driveway as a permeable surface, like having a paver driveway or grasscrete that has the, the, you know, appropriate stone base under it to allow for, for the drainage. So just a typical limestone or pea gravel driveway would not count as a permeable material. So they are, they are included in our, our calculations. And is that true of gravel driveways that meet the maintenance requirements of the code or any gravel driveway? Both, yeah. Any gravel driveway would count as an impervious surface.
I would say that from an engineering perspective, a newly laid gravel driveway is pervious for a limited period of time, but with normal compaction, it quickly becomes as impervious as an asphalt driveway.
And if the homeowners were to do an asphalt driveway with the permit, grading would be addressed with that so that the grain water didn't roll toward their foundations, correct?
Typically, your contractor will work with you to pitch your driveway such that it doesn't pitch towards the house, so they usually put like a crown in a driveway to get things to pitch towards the street or towards the backyard, so that it's not pitching towards the house.
Anybody else want to speak?
Yeah, can I just, I, I'm just looking at the, the certificate of compliance, which is the last page of the packet, and I know, you know, I, I understand what, what Michael said about the issue is, you know, we can get a variance issue. But, you know, once again, I'm struck by the fact that the site to the zoning code is again to the existing gra, to the section regarding existing gravel driveways. It's the section 10-7-3 (8) or E8. So it does not meet the current standards of the zoning code, cites that section, "Must be brought into compliance by November 16, 2016." And then in the actual letter, which is on the backside of that, that also cites to section 10-7-3 E8, that it would need to be brought in conformance with one year. So, I mean, I, I'm not certain that this goes to the variation issue, but, but again, it's this, we've been citing and telling people that to look to this section of the code, which then sends you to the other section of the code, which then arguably loops you back to that section of the code, and, and just the ambiguity in it, it concerns me. And, and again, I understand that that's not a basis for a variation or for a variance, but just pointing it out.
It seems to me that, which was doing and interpreting this was saying, well, you can, if you maintain your gravel driveway 365 days of the year and we don't catch you out of conformance, then you can main, keep it for 100 years. But if we happen to come by and it's not being maintained to the standard, then we will say, "You've gotta use the proper materials." That's how I see this evolve myself.
I, I agree with that, because, I mean, look, even in the notice that like was sent to our neighbors, it says, you know, "Variation sought from section, 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 section 10-7-3 E8, existing residential gravel driveways, which only allows an existing residential gravel driveway to, to continue provided the existing driveway complies with certain maintenance standards." I mean, I agree with you, I think that, I mean, and that's what the code says, I mean, you know. So we would just like to then comply with that section if that's, you know, fine.
The, the letter, Commissioner Matthews, that you, you just read from, it, it does go on in that next sentence to say, "The village is requiring the driveway replaced with an approved paving material by the end of the summer."
But I would, I'm, I don't know.
But I, I know, it's all very.
But it's still, the preceding sentence, compliance, I just, I just keep going back to, if you comply, then you're kicked out, you know, you're, you're back to being allowed to comply with the gravel driveway situation.
I mean, I think, you know, permitted, so, so I totally hear you on that. The, what was the sentence now, like, so long as it's an approved driveway material. So that section, 10-7-3 E7-B2, I mean, God bless lawyers, specifically permits gravel if it exists, gravel, so it says, B2, gravel, existing gravel driveways are allowed to continue subject to subsection E8, existing residential, so, I mean, I think one could then interpret that as gravel is a permitted driveway material as long as it understandably meets the standards, because we don't wanna, you know, crappy.
I would say that whatever the letters written by various village officials say, what counts is what's in the ordinance and that's what we need to look at. And going forward, I wouldn't, I would not be opposed to the village mentioning the possibility of a, applying for a variance to people in this type of situation.
Right, or possibly amending the code, I mean, if it's, from the beginning, you have five, five years to comply with the approved materials list, then we wouldn't have this issue, right?
Yes, if it was clear, and if that is in fact what the intent was back then, because we really don't, I don't think we really know.
But then, but then, I agree with you, but then the code, if you all amend the code, then you all should eliminate in that, you know, on permitted gravel, permitted driveway materials, the concept of gravel, because right now, it, it specifically includes gravel.
Right, so, so if the intent was, you get five years and then you have to have an approved material, then when code amendments are made, the gravel section should come out.
Yeah.
So I would like to make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Does anybody have additional questions for the petitioners? Is there a second?
Second.
At this point, then, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you for your discussion.
All right, let's start with the standards. Again, all seven need, yes, need to be met for us to send a positive recommendation to the board. Shall I read again, or can we just plow in?
I'd like to just plow in.
Okay, great. Who has a recommendation or thought on A? Particular hardship or practical difficulty?
There's a practical difficulty in interpreting the ordinance and as, perhaps in the future, we could clarify with a text amendment, but right now, I would say that there is certainly debate on exactly what the ordinance means or requires.
Is that a thing, Michael? Practical difficulty in the ordinance?
I think it's a practical difficulty in interpreting the language.
I do think there's a practical, physical difficulty here of the existing longstanding paired gravel driveways, that they may be nonconforming. paired gravel driveways that they may be nonconforming, but I think it creates a hardship or practical difficulty for the owners of these two lots to ask them to replace this longstanding gravel driveway with some type of material, whether it be black asphalt or bright white concrete. We've been having a driveway discussion in the village the last couple of years. So I think there's a practical difficulty asking them to replace it. I think there's also a financial difficulty asking them to replace it when what it would be replaced with, I think, would be less fitting for their homes and for that neighborhood.
But what is that hardship? Not the financial one, but there are shared.
The presence of an existing use or structure is the, the structure is the existing driveways. It's peculiar to an inherent in the subject property. It's more than a mere inconvenience to ask them to replace the gravel driveway with an asphalt or concrete driveway.
Other thoughts?
To me, the hardship is really Ms. Schlesinger's in that she was never notified at the time that she purchased the house that this expense was going to be presented to her. I mean, Mr. Jindal was notified at the time of purchase of the home. So to me, right, that's a calculation that you make when you buy a home, if there's something that you have to do to fix it, it's in the calculation of the purchase price. And she was never afforded that opportunity. She was not, she, the hardship is she was not notified that her home was not in compliance until she already owned the home.
I think I could also argue that A two applies to some extent, which provides situations in which the ordinance prevents the owner from reestablishing, restoring, or maintaining a material feature or significant architectural feature related to the lot or structure, or for maintaining the architectural integrity of the lot or structure, with that structure again being the longstanding gravel driveway. I think it does arguably enhance those two houses as opposed to a concrete or asphalt driveway.
Commissioner May, any thoughts?
Yeah, I buy that. I, I certainly wouldn't want to see, I mean, looking at the pictures, I wouldn't want to see a big gravel driveway here. It just seems like it, or I'm sorry, a big concrete driveway, I wouldn't want to see. Yeah, I guess my quibbles are that you're replacing a material that's being phased out with like material. It's not quite asbestos in that it's not like deadly or anything like that, but it's, it's a material that we certainly don't want to see used anymore. However, the, the way the ordinance is written, it allows you to bring that existing material up to standard. So as much as I hate to say like, yeah, bring in all the gravel to make the gravel work, it seems like that's exactly what we're allowing.
Commissioner Matthews, any thoughts?
I mean, I, I think I would argue that section A comes in because of the unusual condition of the specific property, which as of one of thirty odd homes in the village with gravel driveways, it is an unusual condition at a certain level. And then situations in which the ordinance prevents the owner from reestablishing, restoring, or maintaining. And I would underst, I would argue, and I don't know if this is a colorful argument or not, but I, I'll just toss it up there, is that in, in a sense, the ordinance is providing them from, from reestablishing, restoring, maintaining a feature because the ordinance is so, on its face, is unclear what they are expected to do. I mean, do they, are they allowed to stick with the gravel driveway even though it's fallen into disrepair? Or once it falls into disrepair, must you replace it with asphalt or concrete or pea gravel if you live in the, you know, Tolemak House or something? I don't know.
Commissioner Henry? This is rather tricky because I do agree with what several have said about there being some confusion with the ordinance. And in fact, coming into this meeting tonight, I had a very different understanding of what I thought the issue was here. I thought that we were talking about reestablishing a nonconforming gravel driveway because they had not maintained it in accordance with the standards that are set forth in the zoning ordinance. I didn't realize that we were saying that they couldn't have gravel at all, since that wasn't how I interpreted the ordinance. So I'm very sympathetic to that. And I think that if the intention of the village board back in two thousand and five was to prohibit gravel driveways with a five-year sunset period, I don't think that the ordinance we have in front of us in two thousand and nineteen effectively says that. So if that is something that is important, then that's something that should be revisited as a potential text amendment, I think. But I guess my real concern with this particular case is that it's evident that the driveway has not been maintained in quite some time. And I'm not sure what assurances we would have that it would be maintained in accordance with code, were we to grant the variation.
I don't see a hardship with the driveway. I think, I don't see it as a significant feature of the lots. If it were, it would have been maintained prior to, it's not been maintained for more than two years. I'm concerned about setting a precedent. We are trying to get rid of gravel driveways for a reason and it's been working. I agree that the, the text amendment might be in order instead, but I don't see the hardship or difficulty. I'm in the minority, I understand. What about B, the purpose of the variation is not based primarily upon a desire to increase financial gain? I think that's met. Compliance is more expensive, of course.
I agree that it's met. I think it, as Commissioner Miller just said, there's, there's a difference between financial gain and expense. There's no intent to gain from this.
The difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person presently having an interest in the property?
That's true, because it preexisted both petitioners' ownership.
Well, it depends on what one's theory is of the hardship, I guess.
Well, the alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created. I guess you could say that the village passed an ordinance in two thousand and five and imposed new requirements on people who had gravel driveways and both these petitioners purchased after that point in time. So they didn't really create it. They bought properties that were arguably subject to the ordinance. I just, I think it'd be hard to say that they don't meet C because of the complicated set of circumstances here.
The conditions upon which the petition for variation is based would not be generally applicable to other properties within the same zoning classification? It would be applicable to other gravel driveways?
Right, however many there are, twenty-six out of however many homes there are in Riverside.
But those are the only ones that we would be interested in bringing into compliance. So to some extent, you could say that it applies to every property that has a gravel driveway.
But it says within the zoning classification, which is a very broad, plus as we're not including landmark houses, so it's even less than twenty-six. I, I would say that D is satisfied.
I disagree. I think it's applicable to all those twenty-six homes that still have gravel driveways that need to come into compliance, correct?
Except for the landmark ones. What it says would, would not be applicable generally to other property within the same zoning classification. The zoning classification, I don't believe, are gravel driveways, houses with gravel driveways. I don't think that's, I mean, I don't know, maybe it's a question for our attorney. Is, is that a zoning classification?
I think it's a question of what generally means.
Yeah, I, I'd agree with that.
And I would say it, it, it really does generally apply to other properties.
Any other thoughts on that one?
I'd say it generally applies, but we have the additional conundrum of the shared driveway with a water line underneath the property line. This makes it slightly more unique.
Did you say that's pretty not uncommon?
That's not necessarily uncommon. I mean, the fact that it's a shared water and sewer line, there are, you know, that's not the norm, but there are several of them throughout the village and there are several shared driveways throughout the village as well or budding. So those are not necessarily the most unique of circumstances within Riverside.
But the totality might make it somewhat unique. You have a, an existing gravel driveway, shared gravel driveway with water pipes underneath it. So then you're kind of narrowing down the number of properties that are, fall within those parameters. And I, and I don't know how many of those there are. I mean, there's two shared driveways on my block, so I know they exist.
But I agree, if you, if you combine all those three things, there's probably one shared gravel driveway with a shared utility under it.
I hate to be nitpicky about it, but I, I don't, we're not, I don't believe we're considering this worthy of a variation because it's a shared driveway or because of the water line, since those are fairly common throughout the village.
I think that's right.
I would consider those items because it's requiring two people to come in compliance, one who has had adequate notice and one who has not.
Well, that goes.
Or in my opinion, adequate notice. I'm not ma, making a legal statement. So I do think it's a consideration for the variance.
The granting of the variation will not be detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to other property or improvements in the neighborhood in which the property is located?
In my view, that's true. Except for dust, perhaps? Or perhaps. We've heard some comment today that once a driveway, a gravel driveway exists for some period of time, it becomes as compacted as manmade materials. So maybe there isn't dust. And we haven't received any complaints, as far as we know, about the condition, I mean, any nuisance complaints about this driveway, whether it be from dust or anything else.
Just to clarify what I had said earlier about the compaction, that pertains only to infiltration. I can't speak to whether or not there's dust.
Granting of the variation will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood?
That's true, because these driveways have been in existence since nineteen fifteen or thereabouts.
Proposed variation will not impair inadequate supply of light or air, increase congestion or danger of fire, or impair natural drainage, endanger public safety, or substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood. I think all those conditions are met, satisfied. Would you agree? We could argue that paving it would increase the property value.
I think both E and G get to the point, or get to the point why gravel driveways were banned in two thousand and five, but overall, G is met.
I, I have to say too, I'm not, I don't think we have any evidence before us. I think it's purely a matter of opinion whether paving those driveways would enhance nearby property values or whether, again, it would look more country-like and less new suburban-like to maintain these gravel driveways the way they are once they're within proper standards.
Other thoughts?
I would certainly love to see them replaced with pavers. It just seems like we've got leeway written here that allows them to bring the current gravel up to code. If I had my way, I'd say no gravel. I'd say go to brick pavers, go to something else that gives you the same architectural character, but it just seems like there's room for argument here.
Anybody care to make a motion?
I move that we grant the variation before us. I mean, I don't have the reference to the, for P Z one nine dash O two, I move that we grant the variation as requested. Recommend? Recommend.
Is there a second?
Second.
And so that would be to have them bring it into compliance with ten seven three E eight?
Yes. I would, I would add that condition to the recommendation.
Any further discussion?
Can I recommend a requirement of the, the recommendation that once the other home is sold, that it should be brought into compliance with the intent of the variation or of the ordinance?
I think we should make that part of a text amendment.
Okay.
Because it should apply to all gravel driveways.
I would agree. I'm not sure how we can impose that and request that the village impose that. But I don't know if I've missed my opportunity, but I would encourage the petitioners to explore the concept of improving the drainage, even replacing it with the gravel driveway, exploring with the contractor, are there ways to enhance drainage off of that through the gravel base or whatever, by using some pavers or other permeable surfaces.
I have a question for the attorney. If we grant this variation for, to allow a nonconforming shared gravel driveway and in two months, the village board passes an ordinance to clarify and say no more gravel driveways are allowed, does this particular one then get to remain because there's an existing variation? So every other gravel driveway in the village would need to go away but this one?
Yes.
Okay.
If the village board follows.
If that happened.
Would the variation run with the property or run with the owners? And can we indicate that it runs with the owners? In which case it would require a property transfer?
That's, that's exactly why I think after we follow up with this variation, I would make it contingent on any additional text amendments. And I would say that we would ask staff to draft and the attorney to draft a text amendment that says, when you sell your house, you have six months. And make it, and clarify the language of the ordinance. And make it, and clarify the language of the ordinance as it stands right now, because it clearly needs some help.
But, to your question, the variation runs with the land, correct?
Yeah, so, you can, there are instances where they're limited in that way, if you think that's appropriate. I'm not sure if that goes to the hardship so much as the circumstances, you know, so it's a little...
It's a little gray.
Little gray.
Okay.
It's not a standard variation condition, but if you want to propose it...
Well, if we think we can address it with a text amendment, I think that's...
Right, so, in terms of the text amendment, if there's a consensus, so it's not necessarily a condition of granting the variation, but it's an accompanying recommendation to the board to have this issue addressed, so that there is certainty for everybody going forward. If there's a consensus for that, we'll include that as part of the findings.
Thank you for summarizing that much better than I did.
And I think we do want to recommend that, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Any further discussion?
My other comment would be, as Mr. Jindal mentioned, he says he never got any complaint or ticket or anything from the building department, that there was a building code violation. So, I guess I would ask staff to look into whether there are building code provisions that deal with gravel driveways under Riverside's code. And so, that would be a way to maintain, to ensure that homeowners who have gravel driveways maintain their gravel driveways, because they could then be cited to a building code provision.
Anything else? Ms. Colorwell?
Commissioner May?
Aye.
Commissioner Hattigan?
No.
Commissioner Palatier?
Aye.
Commissioner Matthews?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Marhul?
Aye.
Chairperson Mateo?
No.
Motion approved. So, again, it's a recommendation. It goes to the village board next, and you'll be notified when the board will discuss it.
Then, can I ask one question, so if...
Can you go to the podium, please?
So, in that sentence, if you all were to go the route of the text amendment, when that might happen, the only reason I ask is because, obviously, Mary and I are thankful, and we will immediately work on bringing it up to 1073E8. But if, for example, there's a text amendment in the next six months that then says, thou must never have, you know, a gravel driveway, and, you know, like, variances don't apply, because they do typically run with the land, but I do totally hear what you're saying, you know what I'm saying? Then we could end up spending like $4,000, and then, see ya, you know, that we would have to do it again. I'm just asking. I mean, I, just out of curiosity.
I think you'll have a better idea of timing once we, once you see the board discussion of the possible text amendment.
Okay.
So, that'll be probably talked about at the same time as your variation request.
That makes sense.
Okay?
Okay, thank you.
It would appear we have no old business or new business. Is anybody going to the plan, planning meeting tomorrow? Awesome, that's fine.
I'm speaking.
Wireless?
No, dealing with difficult citizens.
Okay. I'm sorry to miss that.
Never get the calls.
Do we know if we have anything next month?
I don't believe I have received anything at this point. The deadline is coming.
So, our next meeting is October 23rd. Stay tuned. All right. Motion to adjourn. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a wonderful evening, everyone. Thanks for coming.